This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
The people online, start with Allison.
Hi, everyone. I'm Allison Leclair. I'm the school superintendent.
Cindy?
Cindy Krasinski, Chair of the School Committee.
Nicholas?
Hi, I'm Nick Bernier. I'm the Director of Business Services for East Hampton Public Schools.
I haven't met you yet. Nick, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Hadel?
This is Hadel Bedell, City Auditor.
Megan?
This is Megan Harvey. I'm a member of the School Committee, Secretary of the School Committee, and a member of the Finance Committee for School Committee.
And JP?
JP Krasinski, City Counselor.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion approved the minutes of September 14th.
I did not send those minutes, did I?
You did.
Did I? I think I still need to revise them.
Let's forget that motion. Mayor's not here, he'll help us speak. So, we decided to have this meeting to kind of get together to figure out how we're going to proceed. And the first thing I wanted to talk about is open meeting law. There was some concern that maybe the school committees, Finance Committee should do an agenda, et cetera. You're invited to our Finance Committee. Now, if you guys wanted to talk afterwards as a group, you would have to set up an agenda and say at 6 o'clock or whenever you want that you would have a meeting. Otherwise, once this meeting concludes, you can't get together and talk about what happened at the meeting. You would have to set something else up. I think that works. We could have joint open meeting, I mean joint agendas set up, but I don't think that's necessary.
I would agree. From my understanding, that's not necessary for us to have our own agenda. We're here as a part of your agenda, and we certainly understand that we cannot allow to continue a conversation as a committee after this, outside of this meeting, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody was okay with that. So what I want to do is go around the room and just ask what your expectations are, the intent of this joint meeting would be coming in the future. I don't know how often we'll meet, and recollections of how it was begun back at the budget discussions. And I want to start with Council Peak and Council Gomez, because you were there at that beginning. And then I'll go around the room and everybody online. Tell me what you feel can be accomplished by this meeting. Sure. Council Peak?
I wish I had the, I don't actually think I have the actual memo I wrote.
Yeah, I was looking for that.
Oh, here it is.
I do have it.
I do have it up. So the idea is to said,
Do you want me to read that?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah, so what it says is in number three, it says the School Committee and City Council will form a joint committee of their respective finance committees, which will meet quarterly with the goal of further understanding and communication between the two bodies. So that's the specific one that I see as intended for this meeting and future meetings. And then obviously, what we're talking about is the other items that are in this, and as well as just sort of better understanding of overall how our committees of finance help support and make the best uses of the funds through the city.
Right, and so you know, one of the things that I definitely be interested in, you know, as we go about this, is getting updates from Nick, from Jessica, you know, from the relevant people, so that, you know, as we go throughout the year, we have an understanding of what's going on on the city side, what's going on on the school side, if there are developments that are going to have fiscal implications that we should be aware of, that we have an opportunity to meet and discuss those things, and that we just sort of make sure that we are doing a better job of communicating with one another about what's going on, so that we can sort of have a bigger picture of of these operations. And my hope in this, I don't know, maybe it will work, maybe it'll need some refining, but my hope with this is that it'll lead to a situation that when we get to budget season this year and in future years, we will be, I'm not saying we'll all agree on everything, but that we'll understand each other a little bit better, we'll understand each other's perspectives a little bit better, and there won't be as much time spent during those discussions, sort of like establishing facts, like we'll have a better understanding of where we are, and then the question is, what should we do about it?
President Gomez?
I think it's really important for these two committees to start working and understand the finance of the city. I think it's for, the council is kind of clear to understand almost every department, because most of them, they usually come to us for us for appropriation, except the school department. The school department is the one that we give them an amount of money when we approve the budget, and they wouldn't know, because we are now working day to day with them, how they use the money. They present something for us when we are approving the budget, but at the end, they decide how to use it, how to move money, because they don't, they don't need the approval of the city council. On the other side, I think it's really important for the School Committee to understand how the city money works, the free cash, the civilization money, all those accounts, and see how the finance works in, at the other side, that they don't see every day. And I think it's really important for the committee to learn the process for both, for the school and the city side. This, that is really important that we are not hiding anything, everything, including the school, I don't think they're hiding anything. And I think we should be on the same page when they propose the budget. If the city can pay for that, like every other department, I think this is the the goal of having these joint committees, to put the numbers on the table, and to figure it out, yes, this is the numbers.
Mayor?
I would certainly agree with both everything that Thomas and Omar have said. I think the piece that I would, I think, understanding process, understanding better communication, understanding fiscal implication for the city. I think all of those things are really critical. The piece that I would say, I would personally think that we need to not do though, is, well, let me say it this way, I think we need to also recognize why we're here. So why we're here is because we just merged all, a bunch of schools into one, right? So Mountain View was a moment in the city's history like no other, and that caused budget implications like no other. And I think that we really have to understand that that's the context that we're meeting in, because that's what caused a jump from five buses to 12 buses. That's what caused a big increase in our fixed costs. It also coincided with other things that happened with our tuition costs of students going out of our district to Smithville and and CTEC. I started another one. Anyway, the other, both of our technical schools, so CTEC, thank you. So, that is why we are here. I think that there are other, there's sort of underlying reasons too about understanding and communication. But I don't personally think we need to have the intention to get into the nitty gritty of, like you said, we don't need approval for how we spend our budget. But we do want to make sure that everyone understands how our budget works, how we review our budgets, and how we then come to the city, you know, once a year to work that through. And because of the over million dollar, half a million dollar shortfall that was provided in last year's budget going into fiscal '23, we're going to need to come back to you guys and deal with that. And that's our intention, is this, for this to be a one-time thing, and not to be a ongoing requirement that we're going to change the model that we're working in. So I just, I want to make sure that I'm 100% for understanding process and sharing our processes between our two different bodies, and getting better communication to us, but I think that we also need to understand that context, and why we're here, and how we can sort of fix this immediate moment, and then look towards the future in a much sort of softer way in terms of any kind of joint work that we need to do, unless it's needed.
Okay, I'm not going to call on Jessica or Hadel, because you guys are elected officials, but you're welcome to raise your hand at any time. My wife is updating me on the hurricane, and I apologize, that's not why we're here.
We have people in Florida.
Let's go to JP. Oh, I'm sorry, hold on. Connie, let's keep in the room, keep in the room first, and then we'll go to the TV.
Yeah, I agree with everything, process, context, those things are all important, and just on a, on a personal level, right, I want to be responsible in my role, and I found both the process and the circumstances around the context, and, and the process of the city, and the process of the, of the school budget kind of complicated, and I would just, you know, like to do my due diligence in terms of understanding that better, so that I could be more effective, and I certainly want to be supportive of the schools, and I want to be able to communicate to constituents kind of the situation, and how we can, and it's important that we don't have the same situation that we had this year, and so just be more effective in that.
JP?
I would certainly agree with everything that's been said. I appreciate the positions of both bodies, the City Council and the School Committee. I think we're totally different elected bodies, and we have different responsibilities. That being said, we do have kind of a joint problem that happened this year with the Mountain View School, in that there were an additional, the way, the way Marin described it, seven buses. So that creates additional routes that never were there. And I think it created like about a half a million dollar shortfall in the budget, or a half a million dollar addition. So anytime we can put together some creative ideas to help with that specific issue, I think that's important. And I think that's one of the reasons why we're here.
Okay, Allison?
Thank you. So I'm just going to pick up on some of the points that were made by others. I agree with just about everything that's been said, so that's where I would start. I think that there are a lot of positives that can come from this kind of collaboration. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, it was really loud. We were turning it down.
Oh, thank you.
We have a fancy speaker here.
And so what I would say, a few things, I think to Coney's point, you know, we are the largest budget in the city, we're, we're a pretty significant piece of the budget that the city maintains, and so I think that, you know, I think it is fine that we provide more information to the City Council and educate all of you on what are, what those funds are used for. And, you know, what I would say is that we are being the largest budget in the city, we are audited probably more than any other department in the city. We're constantly audited externally, internally, by the Department of Ed. So we have, you know, a lot of transparency, but it's not often shared or made available to the City Council. So that's definitely an area where we could make those inroads. As a school district, there are a lot of fixed costs that we deal with every year, that that's not going to change. We have strategic planning for the next three to five years, we know the direction we want to go in. You know, we know what the variables are that we're going to be hit with. Our special ed population, transportation costs, inflation, those kind of things. We don't always know the exact number, but there's a lot of things that we can predict. We're, we're a very transparent, predictable department. Unlike, you know, we don't have a lot of overtime, that sort of thing. So I think those are areas where we could definitely collaborate and bring some awareness to members of the City Council. So I think it's, I think it's a positive experience. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Cindy?
So when we were having these conversations with, when I was having these conversations with city councillors, it became really clear that it is a misunderstood budget. We are huge, we really are, and it, it's hard unless you're actually looking at those numbers and those transfers all the time, to really understand what we're doing with this huge budget. So I like the idea of us meeting and communicating so that we can share what our fixed costs are, what our variables are, how our budget changes, and how it's built. Because I think there's a lot of, there's not a lot of understanding about how we build the budget. And so I'm looking forward to that. And also, I know Tom had the idea, and I agree with it, that some of these surprises, like transportation, we might be able to do some forward thinking, both with the City Council and the School Committee, to come up with a way to solve these problems in the future before they come and hit us like they did this year. So I'm really excited about it. I think communication is really good. I think understanding between both bodies is really excellent, and I think there's nothing but a plus-plus coming down the pipe.
Megan?
First of all, excuse my voice. I'm recovering from laryngitis. I joined School Committee to continue that bridge between parents and School Committee and the school side of things, and I think this budget season was really scary for parents, as they looked at a huge shortfall, and worried that that meant that positions would be cut, and what impacts that would have on, on kids. So, you know, I think that all of these points that have been brought up are, are great. I agree, it's a win-win. I hope we continue to do this quarterly, and I hope that this is helpful for parents and families, you know, understanding kind of what the heck is going on here, and how we all, I think we all agree that we're going to fund education, and we're going to make sure our kids get a really good education, and that's our, our first goal.
Thank you. Now Nicholas, I put you in the category of staff like Hadel and Jessica, so raise your hand if you want to add anything, but I want to move on, okay? You want to say something, okay?
Your mic. I just, first of all, wanted to, you know, introduce myself to the council members who I've not yet met. You know, I've only, I started on July 1st, I'm, you know, really new to this, this role. You know, so I don't necessarily have all the historical context of where these joint subcommittee meetings, you know, or that idea came from. And, you know, I do understand that the budget process for FY '23 was, was certainly rocky, and you know, I, I don't need all the details, because I think if we get mired in that, we'll never move forward, which is what I view the point of these meetings being. And, you know, I see my role in this, this process going forward as sort of being the bridge between, you know, the school finances and the, and the city finances. I mean, I, you know, I think a large part of my role will be helping the council to understand the ins and outs of how school finance works, you know, in general. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, regulations and controls and everything there. You know, but also what exactly we do with the funds that are appropriated to us. On the other hand, it's crucial for me, in my position, to have a firm understanding of municipal finance as well, because, you know, we're certainly the largest department, but we're also certainly not the only department. And I, you know, I do understand the complexities of municipal finance and trying to balance all of those, those limited resources that any given municipality has. One thing that I've, you know, made a real point to do since I've come on board is, is, you know, talk, have discussions with Jessica and Hadel, which, you know, I do frequently. I don't think a day goes by, except for Friday, where I don't, you know, I don't speak with one or both of them, you know, I'll have questions about things, or, you know, just kind of tell them what's going on, and, you know, I think that's important, you know, because, you know, ultimately, our departments do have to work together for the benefit of the kids and for the benefit of the community. So, you know, if there's information you're seeking, you know, just let me know. I do quarterly presentations to the School Committee, Finance Subcommittee, you know, I have a whole budget development process which will occur in the coming months. You know, the information's there. So, you know, I think communication between the bodies can, you know, lead to more transparency, and a better understanding, and ultimately, a much smoother process of making sure that we provide our students with what they need in a fiscally responsible manner. So, thank you.
Okay, I haven't said anything yet. I find everything that happened led to a mistrust of each other, in a sense. And we have to rebuild that trust. And how we do that is not just with communication, but with education of how the budget works. How our budget works, ours, the city side, and especially the School Committee's budget, it is extremely complicated. The School Committee has all the authority to move money around in their budget or decide where that money goes. We only have the authority as a council to approve the budget submitted by the mayor, and we've never cut it. And in my 27 years, yes, I'm an old guy, 27 years on the council, there's been debate, but we've never had the kind of difficulty we've had this year. And I, now I'm educated to the fact that when you pointed, I think it was Marin who pointed out, that the move to the new school created budget holes that were never there before. That educated me already. But what's interesting is, I don't think a lot of city councillors study the School Committee's budget. Allison used to give us a nice package, and I might ask you to do that again for our membership, only because we ought to study it, we ought to understand it. When some, when I asked the question, what does circuit breaker mean? What is the influence of charter school tuitions and, and all the things you have to deal with in the budget? They're not things that this committee and the council are familiar with and are, ever have to deal with. But if we're going to approve appropriations, and I like hearing that we're hoping we don't have to do this too often, but if we're going to approve appropriations, like with every other budget in the city, and every other department, we need to know enough about the school's budget to understand where you're coming from. So, I'm looking forward to learning more about that budget. In fact, the next quarterly meeting, I might ask us, us councillors, to look at the budget and be prepared to ask questions of Nick and of Allison and of the members of the Finance Committee, what does this number mean? Now, it's quite clear to me that the shortfall caused by the school, a lot of it, you've mentioned busing all the time, you went from a lot less busing to more busing, and there's net spending and non-net spending, I love all these terms. It's almost as bad for me as understanding retirement. And what all of that means, and I'm very glad we have Jessica and Hadel and Nick to cover our butts with regard to understanding that. I have always as trusted the School Committee budget process, because we've never had an issue where you really felt that you're so short that you had to go to the council in the way you did this year. And I've always felt that the superintendent and the School Committee were on top of their needs. So I want you to know that. My trust in what you do is still there. I need to learn why this happened, and I need to learn more. I need to stop just doing that without knowing what you're going through. So I want to know what you're going through. Now, the next thing I want to talk about, I put it on here, is this audit. All right, go ahead.
Just one, one request that, just before we move on to there, just as I was going around the room, one request that I could make to Hadel, Jessica, and to Nick in our future meetings, when we're meeting quarterly, is if you become aware of any fiscal events in the city that are likely to deviate, either the school's budget or the city's overall budget from, you know, just the sort of, you know, small Prop 2.5 constrained increases that we usually see, it would be really great if we could become made aware, if we could be made aware of that here, right? Like, I really wish, not that I would have necessarily been able to do anything differently, but I really, like the busing thing, you know, we, like, I don't really watch School Committee meetings, because I go to my council meetings, my two committee meetings, and then the committee meetings of the things I have legislation in, and then if there's a night where I'm not doing that, I am trying to, you know, hang out with my household and my, maintain friendships and stuff like that. So, but I kind of wish that, I was unaware in the fall and the winter of last year, when the school district was grappling with this realization that A, there was a bus problem, and B, there was a regional or maybe national busing, bus shortage. Like, this was, we were not, I just, it was sort of like, you know, when I get that number, it's like I'm suddenly made aware of all of the stuff that you guys went through over the last year that I was not aware of. So I think it would help us in this process. If there's going to be something, we received some new money we didn't have before, some money that we were counting on fell off, a thing that used to cost this now costs double that, those sorts of things. Just be, being made aware of those things early, I think, could help us so that we understand we, our, like, our needs and our abilities to respond to those needs.
So I think that there's two pieces to that, and I was nodding or shaking my head no as you're speaking, and I apologize for that felt destructive or distracting, but from a School Committee's member, and so many other people have been a part of bringing online the Mountain View School. So the conversations about transportation was not new to last fall or last winter. For those people, and, and yes, I totally understand, we all have our areas that we focus on, but for people who've been involved with the school, and I would certainly say the mayor, who's been knowledgeable for, from day one of her tenure as mayor of the city, she's known that the school consolidation came with an increase in a number of costs and a decrease in certain costs. That's been a part of our budget conversations and our public presentations from day one. So there's, there's, there is a lot of knowledge about all of those factors going in. The tuition costs and the increases there is not one of those things that's also played into this past year as well. But I would just wanted to say that in terms of the transportation costs, that's been known for four years, right? And we've been talking about it, we didn't have the numbers with it, but we've known that that was going to have a pretty significant increase for the entire time we've been talking about building this school. And so I just want to make sure that that's understood. And then I would just ask that for you, just to clarify, are you talking about changes that might be 50,000, changes that might be 500,000, changes that might be, like, what, what scope are you talking about changes? Because as we've talked about, our budget has changes, fluctuations with grants, and all the different factors that go into it on a regular basis. So if you could put some, like, guardrails on what your request is, then we know how to meet that better.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I'm not sure, but I can think about that. I mean, I think just in general, you know, we know that, like, there's some things that are, that you can adjust to pretty easily, and there's some things that are going to be an issue. And what exactly that point is where that switches, off the top of my head, I don't know. But I would just, in the meantime, just trust the discretion of the individuals involved to to sort of know, you know, what is, what, what needs to be brought up.
And so maybe I can just offer.
Just a minute, Cindy.
Maybe if I can just offer one more detail, then, just, and just again, for, for context and knowledge, is that, so some of the, some of the things that we sometimes deal with, like, so a grant that we are anticipating this year, we got, but it came in, I think it's, and Nick can clarify or confirm the exact amount if we need to, but it's like 50,000, $57,000 or less than we had last year, right? So that's, that's a
Sure.
impact, whether that's something that the impact. Whether that's something that the scope that this kind of a joint committee needs to discuss, I don't, I think that might be below the threshold personally. Um, and the other, the other example is that we can have a new student step into our district. You know, September first, that has special needs that costs the city just, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. And just because of them stepping into our district, right? And that's just how our budget fluctuates. Um, and um, again, it's like, we have certain parameters about who we can talk about and how we can talk about for protection reasons. That we can't always have those conversations, and we don't want to make all of those kind of details public in a way that might be able to be actually labeled to a specific person, right? So there's some of those different pieces that are nuances that we have to work with. Um, and I'll leave it there. But I just think that it's helpful for us to think about.
So we don't, we all
Oh, you want me to turn that off?
Or or Ali said what, what happened there because
I think Allison, you said it was seventy six thousand is what I
Yeah, I see it here. Thank you. We tend not to use chat, but okay. Cindy, you had your hand up. Oh, you're muted, Cindy.
Thank you. I quieted myself and I forgot to turn myself back on. I apologize. Um, so he I I think we can solve this initially by having more frequent meetings. We talked about quarterly and I know we're super busy. But this, I think this communication is so important, and especially the part, it's going to take a little while to understand all the different um comings and goings of our budget. So I was thinking, what if we met every other month instead of quarterly initially so that we can start with some presentations of how the budget's built, how monies come in, how they go out, what unforeseen things happen from year to year that we have to plan for. Um, and I just think that if we do quarterly, it's going to be closer to budget season before everybody understands this. Whereas if we do every other month, um, we might get to that that communication and that real understanding much sooner.
All right, I just wanted to, that sounds good because you're right. It'll jump right into budget season. Um, I just wanted to briefly touch on this audit that's being prepared, the RFP. And I wanted to look at it as a positive thing for me. Because Allison mentioned that you're always audited by the Department of Education. So I believe, and I have to trust this, that the school committees, this audit that's going to happen is going to pretty much defend what you've been doing. In other words, there's not going to be some outrageous remark from the auditor, this new auditor, that says you, you know, you missed this money, there's money that's you should have done. They may come up with management or numbers, things that they suggest, but they're suggestions, and you could come back and say, well, we'd rather do it this way. I I I believe that's how audits to me are not necessarily, unless it's the IRS, I don't want I I don't necessarily look at it as a negative for the school committee. I look at it as it's going to defend your process, because if you said you're being audited and and you feel very comfortable in how you've developed a budget. I just don't want people to fear this. I like it because it's something, some other eyes on the numbers that tells us are you doing things? So I just wanted to put that in here as, I know it's being developed, that it's important to the process, and we thought it was developed when the budget uh talks were done, and I I have no problem with it from the point of view, that point of view. Allison. Mute, okay.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to piggyback on what you're saying. Yes, we are audited by the Department of Education. But to be clear, we are also audited by the same auditors that audit the city. So we are audited also by external firms on a regular basis. So I did want to add that piece of information. You can audit us all you want. We're audited multiple times a year. And I agree with you, Dan. I don't think they're going to discover anything new because we're audited by so many resources, that we're audited for federal grants. We're audited for our school district budget. We're audited up the wazoo. So you know, you want to add to that? That's fine. That's if that's how the city wants to use their funds. That, I think that's fine. I don't, I don't have a worry about it. But I just wanted to clarify that for you.
Glad to hear that, because uh it sounds to me like you guys do work your numbers very carefully. And I I, you know, I don't know what it'll do, except there's always disagreements on where you're going to spend your money. You've got a lot of money to deal with, and you've got a lot of places to put it. So those disagreements are always going to be there, but that's why you have a school committee that deals with this. I would hate to have the city council have to deal with all the accounts that you have to deal with. So, please. The last thing I wanted to talk about is appropriations and how they're worked out, because I believe, and I'm, I may be wrong, we've only had in my tenure maybe two appropriations that come post-budget from the schools. One was an emergency need to repair boilers at one of the grade schools. That happened not too long ago. Whatever. And and while there was one in a grade school too. Anyway, that's equipment. And you needed it as an emergency appropriation. It was obvious it was done. This appropriation is operational budget appropriation. It's not, normally when we get an appropriation during the year, it may be an emergency need for a repair. A new piece of equipment, because free cash is normally used. There's a big capital list of what's needed for the city. DPW needs a new truck, uh dump truck or something, and free cash is used for that. Uh, some of it's put into stabilization to save it for the rainy day, like if we have a recession like we had in two thousand and eight. Everybody's budget may be supported by stabilization if that happens. But operational budgets, when an appropriation comes to us for operational budgets, it usually comes at the end of the fiscal year or near it. Because a department head says, we're going to run out, we're going to, we have overtime in the fire department budget, we had a million calls, we have to cover it. Or and uh lots of little things happen. Um, so with an operational budget like this year, we had operational uh the mayor didn't give enough money to public safety for the fire police, and then covered it with a free cash appropriation. Now, when that becomes part of the new budget year, that's listed on the budget as being the what do we call that? That was a, it wasn't the first budget, it was the uh revised budget. Is that what you would call it? But that's the operational budget of that fiscal year. So when you put in for this, I guess it's five hundred thousand dollar supplemental appropriation, it goes to operational budget, which I'm hoping, you know, we get it. Obviously, you're going to defend the need, and you've already done that, and you're probably going to rehash it. But that means that your budget went up that amount, whatever that percentage is, so that your revised budget for fiscal year twenty three is that amount. So just so you understand. Now, to me, what concerns me when we do that, and I was very glad to hear you say, we're going to try not to have to do this again, is that we need to understand the difference between a structural budget revenue and non-structural. And what I mean by that is if you take mon- money from our savings accounts, our stabilization or free cash to support an operational budget, that is not recurring revenue. We don't know what our free cash is going to be every year. We do have stabilization, but if we start dipping into that for operational budgets, our bonding companies go crazy. They don't like that at all. And our interest rates saved us a lot of money when we built the new schools because of that. So I want you to be aware that that's one of the questions will be, do you think you're going to be able to cover this in the new fiscal year? And I've heard that there might be more chapter seventy money coming, so you might be already on top of it. I was happy to hear that you said that. But that's important to understand. I'm saying this not just for the people in the room and online, but for the public. This is an operational budget request, which means we have to be careful that the revenue that covers this next year is structural. It comes from an increase in taxation or state aid or something, or moving numbers around. Because if you don't do that, you'll be back for more. And and I don't want to go into this. So I was very happy to hear that. Uh, I know you've had your hand, I'll go with Tom and then I'll, I'll go with uh, okay.
I just wanted to point out, I mean, so just to your point, um, we already are in the process of revising our budget. Uh, we've already discussed it this last school committee, and the next school committee will be taking a new vote um, in order to align our budget with what was approved by city council. Um, so that that just sort of resets, because as we're, as of right now, the current approved budget by school committee is our previous budget. So we're going to first take the step in our next committee to align with what was actually approved. Um, and then, yes, then after that, we will be coming to present a need for an appropriation. Um, what, from everything that we're understanding though, be because these are um funds that go towards paying contracts, we are not wanting to wait till the end of the year. It is our desire to do it um as soon as possible. Um, so that it's, because those, again, are um costs that are already known. Um, and so that's something that we're hoping to do within October, November, um depending on when free cash is available and processed. So then we can start to deal with that process. Um.
I, the other part of that, I'll get to you in a minute, Tom, and then you, Allison, is that all appropriations, supplemental appropriations go through the mayor. So if you want it earlier than, say, the audit's done, you're going to have to tell her, we need it now because this, you're going to have to, every department head goes to the mayor first. Look, we need this done or we're not going to survive this budget. So you have to do that, and you're going to have to hopefully have a friendly conversation about why you need it, you know, sooner rather than later. And I'm just saying that because that's the process. Um, she's stated that she will do the appropriation. But again, we're going to have to defend it if it's earlier than when the audit is done. That's all I'm saying. Uh, Tom first, and you, Allison, Tom.
I have a, a technical question, um, which is when we are discussing this appropriation, is there no, are we, are we good to do that from an open meeting law perspective, given that it is the appropriation itself is not on our
No, I was only talking about process.
Timelines and processes, okay.
But I'm not talking about the actual, we don't know what it's going to be. Maybe it's going to be less, maybe it's going to be more. So I'm just saying, he's already brought up that, and that was the shortfall that was determined back, way back in June, so.
Right. So I guess all I would say is I would just encourage people to avoid discussing specific numbers, what specific needs will be met, things like that, until there is something before us, just to avoid any sort of open meeting law concerns. But um, but but that's all. Thanks.
Allison.
Thank you. Um, just to continue on with the theme of transparency. You know, we have been vocal, um, as has uh the members of the school committee about the deficit that we had this year um with the transportation specifically. So that's been a well-known fact. Uh, uh, all of you are aware of that. And um, so our thought process throughout the last several months has been that we will be seeking um an appropriation as soon as as the free cash is certified on the city side. Because I do want to point out to your earlier um comment, councillor Rest, when you talked about, you know, usually the common practice in departments is wait until the end of the year when you're kind of doing that cleanup and you, you know, you need some discretionary funds, maybe you went over and some of your lines, there was something that happened. And I will say clearly to you that we don't have that amount in discretionary funding. We are so um fixed costs that we don't have in in total in the school district budget. We don't have that many, that much discretionary funding. So I can't wiggle and navigate because our salaries are predictable. You know, our, we know exactly what our staff makes. We know the tuitions that go out. We know most of our costs are extremely fixed. We know what the contracts are that we have out. And of course discretionary things come in, as have already been mentioned in this um meeting. But that's a fixed cost, and we need to have that money in our budget in order to pay our bills because we're legally bound by contracts. So um, we can't shave off money here or there. I can't say, run fewer buses, let's save a few dollars. I don't have that discretion. And if you um know, if you've heard from any families in this community, I have families that want more busing, not less. So um, I would be, I would be taken out to the back and, you know, there would be words. Because um people really are counting on transportation in this community. So there's very little, I don't have that much that I can cut um in order to make up that deficit. So that's why, and I'm happy to show that at a future meeting. We can discuss specifics around that with our budget.
Let me, let me also be very transparent. When you ask for something out of free cash and you do it on like November, that's exactly what public safety did last year. So it's not unusual. I I misspoke. A lot of the operational budget requests do come at the end of the year. But the knowledge that uh public safety needed money came from the mayor in November last year, I think, Tom, so. We knew it was going to be short and we worked on it. So I misspoke when I said a lot of them come at the end of the year. That's true, but they also come beforehand. Leads me to what I'd like for our next meeting, and we'll do it in two months, because I think Cindy's right about that. I would like our councillors, and I'm talking to me, to study the budget of the school committee, of the schools. We can't ask you, why not do this? Or when you say, look at that line in the budget, without knowing that budget. So I'm going to ask Allison and and Nick. I know it's probably online, but if you can send us a version of the budget, I don't need all the the uh, I personally don't need all the dialogue that goes with it, all the defense of it. I just want the numbers. So when I see uh special ed, circuit breaker and all that, I can say, what does that mean? Or if, and I want us all councillors to do more homework on this, because if you're going to come to us with an appropriation request, and you're going to point to contracts, we can look at that in the account lines. Because when we go for an appropriation request for any other department, we do that. When we study the budgets of all the other departments, we go line by line, because we're approving that department's budget. There is no other committee that does that. We do it, the city council does, and the finance committee does. So we need, we see all the accounts. Now, you have a hell of a lot more accounts than, say, the police department or the fire department, but we still need to understand them. And the biggest account you have is personnel. So the biggest question would be, if you don't get this appropriation, you say you're going to lose staff. Okay? You could, we could point at those numbers. All I'm saying is, for the councillor's sake, can you send us, and maybe it's not a huge version of the budget, but it has all the lines, and maybe a set of definitions, like circuit breaker. This is, okay? And and if it's a bullet point or whatever, I don't want you to do a lot of extra work. I just want something that isn't so necessary for a CPA to tell me what it is. I want to be able to try and understand it the first reading. Now, I've seen them before, you used to present them all the time. Uh, but a lot of our councillors may not have. So I'd I'd like us councillors to have that for the next meeting. Allison, is that possible?
You're muted. So two things in response to that, um, I would request that if we um, provide that information to you in the next week or so, and you have a chance to review it. If there are questions or concerns that pop up, if you could collect them and maybe email us so that we can be prepared to respond to you. I think that would, I think that, you know, obviously, you know, more questions will be generated as they were tonight and other conversations will start. But if there are some specific things that you'd like a really clear explanation on, if we could get a heads up from you uh before that meeting, then we can be prepared. Um, so that would be one request. And the second request, and I just want to be clear with everyone. You mentioned circuit breaker quite a bit. Circuit breaker is like a grant. And so I'm not sure. Um, you know, when you look
I love the term, forgive me.
When, I know your daughter-in-law is a sped director, that's why I'm picking on you. But, you know, when you look at um providing um an appropriation to the police department, say, and you want to know, like, okay, what, you know, what's your budget look like? Are you also asking them for a full review of their grants? And are you taking those into consideration as well? Because our grants are kind of a different animal. Because our grants are kind of a different animal. That's money that we get to supplement or support our budget. So I don't, I, I would caution you that it should not be a consideration of our budget.
Okay.
It can be part of a, it can be a whole different night we can spend on grants if you want, but I guess I just want some clarification on direction.
Omar, before I, I like the idea of sending questions, I just heads up, be careful with the open meeting law, and those start having the liberation between counselors on my side because I'm a city council president, I'm concerned about that. So just, just be careful with open meeting law.
Let me say this, that's a great point. If we send you questions, they're not going to be answered by email. They're going to be answered, they're going to be answered in a meeting.
Yes.
Because if you, we go back and forth, that's an open meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
The only thing I would say to the idea of grants is, are they used in the operational budget because you get them every year? Those are the ones I want to talk about. Grants that are one-time things, like this federal lesser money or other things, how have they affected your budget? I might ask that, how does the federal money that all came in because of COVID affected your budget? But I don't need to see that right now. My feeling is the general budget you have has always been the same. And we can look at the numbers and what, I don't know if your budget's developed this way, but if you have 2022 fiscal year and 2023 and it sees a, I see a busing increase, that would be useful. In other words, to see prior year budgets on that particular spreadsheet, that would be great.
Yep.
Because that way you can see what you've had to deal with. We see that in our budget discussions for the other departments.
Yes, we have that.
Okay, so only in the sense of grants, for me, it's about what affects your budget. You count on, I guess circuit breakers are grant, but you count on that every year. It's not something that is one-time. One-time grants, we might ask for at some point, if you've used them to structurally support your budget, my biggest question will be, what's going to happen when those grants run out? So that's a big question and everybody has that. You know, we have, we have all this money, what's going to happen when we don't have it anymore? Because it's nice to have it now. So in any way, that's all I'm asking and I don't have anything else for tonight except that request. Aaron?
I just want to, I wonder, I can imagine for Allison and Nick thinking about what they're going to be sending to you as city council members and what then our conversation is going to be, that in of itself, trying to explain all of that, and I think this is what Allison was trying to point towards, could potentially be a very long conversation. That could be a couple hours if you really want to get into the meat of our budget over years, in the grants, what's the future implications? Like that can be a very long conversation. So I wonder if there, if before we end here, I felt like you just sort of opened it way up and I wonder if there's any way you want to make it clear of what your needs are so that you're getting the information that you want so that we can be moving forward without having too big of a conversation, which we're welcome to do, but it's just going to make the next conversation a much bigger conversation.
I didn't put the budget on the agenda, so we can't have that conversation now. But for me, it's about the questions that we did ask. That's all. I don't want you to have to go through and defend every line by line. Like when we do our budget discussions, I believe I do this all the time, I look for those anomalies. Why is there a big increase in this line? You would say, we need more buses. Frequently we have personnel changes in the city side budgets that we look at and there's a new $60,000 account line for a new position. We need that talked about. We don't go through the nickel and dime, at least I don't. So I don't necessarily need that and I would say, our counselors need to be educated about the budget that you have and that education is on us to look at it and ask the questions. So I'm not going to ask you, Allison and Nick, to go line by line. I'm going to wait to see what questions there are from counselors. Connie?
I think for me, I just, again, for me to be transparent, like, you know, I hear what's being said and at the same time, I don't, I don't know what I don't know, right? And so I just, I want to be able to have a conversation about that, right? I want to be respectful. I don't want to be coddled, right? But I, I, I do, I, I want to be helpful and I want to be able to understand. But where I'm sitting right now, I don't, I don't need, I don't know yet, right? And so I just, I just want to acknowledge that, I just want to.
Totally understand because it took me a while to understand what little I understand about the school budget. So, Hadal.
Is there any place where I can understand big picture? Because honestly, school budget, I don't know 101 on school budget. Do you have any place like where you can say, okay, big picture, this is how we base our budget on, maybe five points, six points, and that goes with all the line items? I think that would narrow down a lot of questions from everybody because that, those are the basic fundamentals to set up the budget. Does that make sense? Is that, is there any place where I can educate myself or, you know, is there a documentation which I can, you can direct me to and I can, I can read and understand and go from there? Because honestly, I don't understand.
You and Nick are in the same building, maybe a conversation there would help. Obviously, the budget is so complicated and every year, the same accounts come forward. You have so many teachers, you have to pay them and we have so many other things, special ed programs, all these things that you have to pay for. I don't know how to answer your question, Hadal, except maybe if you and Nick and Allison can just have a conversation. And because it's important that you understand it because you're with the city side and this appropriation comes from free cash, it's got to, or maybe it's coming from stable. I don't know where the mayor's going to pull it from, but it's got to come from someplace and you're going to be the one to account for it. JP?
Hadal, I really appreciate your question. I, I think that's instructive for all of us in that whatever materials there may be, I think could be very useful to Hadal and might even be helpful for some of the counselors who don't have anywhere near the accounting and budget building experience that you have. But I think the process can be helped and, and I can see Connie help me just gathering new information and I see Allison shaking their head. And I think if there are some materials, we'd love to see them too.
Now, I talked about open meeting, I'll get to you in a second, Cindy. There's no reason why Connie can't ask Nick or Allison a question prior to this meeting we're going to have, because that's not a discussion through email or between a bunch of counselors or a bunch of other school committee members. So there's no reason we all can't say, oh my God, or I can call somebody. Cindy, go ahead.
So would it be helpful, and Allison, you might just hate this idea. Would it be helpful if we brought, when we're looking at our budget needs for the, for the next coming year, we do it in sections. And so, and, and I think we could do a synopsis of each section. So if we did, we looked at the high school, this is what we need for the high school, these are the major changes, just as we do when we're building our budget. And then of course we do our other section with, you know, the elementary, which is now Mountain View, together and do that in a section. I mean, I think we could prepare it in that way so that we're doing it almost as though we're in our sub-finance meetings. I think it's very clear and understandable to section it out that way. Does that sound okay, Allison? Or am I?
Whatever way you want to present it.
Yeah.
I don't want to have, I just want to say, I don't want to have three separate meetings on high school, elementary.
No, no, I think we can do it in one meeting, but in just sections so that you see.
I don't care. Sure.
We can do that and we can give you some major bullet points, like for example, off the top of my head, I don't have the percentage, but say like 86% of our budget is fixed costs around personnel because we have settled contracts. So the majority of our budget is personnel. That's, that's a big takeaway for Hadal to have. Like I don't have discretion on that unless someone leaves and I hire someone new, but it's predictable as far as I have settled contracts, you know, I have.
Just like every other department, because when we get the police and fire department.
So those are some like a big takeaways. Yeah, yeah. So I can do something.
All right. And I'd recommend that we meet as a subcommittee here shortly to, to sort of review some of that, either in advance of this next meeting or, you know, I think you guys, obviously you have full knowledge of what maybe you want to send to them, but we should meet as a committee before this next joint meeting as well.
So, okay, I want to end this night with this thought. Would we meet again? We usually have one hour of finance meetings at 5:00 on a Wednesday. So if we have a 6:00 meeting on that same Wednesday, it would help a lot of counselors, us for instance, if you guys came at 6:00. That possibility, I don't know when that'll be, probably it's October, November sometime.
Could we, could we make it November 30th? That's the last Wednesday in November and I think.
Cindy, if I could just, I don't think that, it would be my recommendation that we will, don't wait that long, because again, if we're looking to bring forward an appropriation request, we want to have the education before we're making requests.
Good point.
So I don't think we want to wait till the end of November. So I, I was just talking with Councilor Omar that maybe we could be looking at earlier in November, you might be meeting on the 9th, for instance. If that would be a timeline that we might be able to see as our next joint meeting and coming at 6:00, I think it's fine for us.
Okay.
I can.
All right. 9th of November. I, I don't see any reason, if I see that our agenda on finance, we don't have, the reason we had this meeting tonight is I didn't have any appropriation, very unusual. But we will have some next week and we will have, probably with free cash, we always have a bunch, we have to buy a new truck or something. So November, yes, November 9th sounds good. So let's count on that. Why did I lose the entire? Are you still here?
Who are you missing?
Entire meeting, I lost it. They're still up there.
No, but you were.
I lost them on my screen, so I don't know what happened. Oh, I know what I did. I went from, I, I just clicked on tab.
Stop clicking.
Okay, everybody, thank you very much. We'll look forward to the 9th and please send that information, Allison, to also Hadal and Jessica. So if they have a question, I mean, I, I was kind of interested to hear that, that Hadal has not as much knowledge as maybe I thought she would have of the school committee's budget, but she has, she has a hell of a lot of other things to worry about, so that's understandable. But it would be important that she and Jessica look at the budgets and if they have questions, they should be able to ask them, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
I need a motion, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn and for the discussion, all in favor? I thank you all.
Thank you. Good night.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.